I'd like to call the meeting to order. Advise everyone that this meeting is being recorded. There is no one else here in attendance recording, so we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It does not appear that we have anyone here for citizens' concerns and comments, so we're going to quickly just overt the minutes and move to the superintendent's report because we have some guests with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have guests this evening. We have three with us tonight. We have Marjorie Craver, Allison Donahue, and John Bastian. And as previously reported to you, they, along with Tammy Bailey, were really the ringleaders. I know they came before you once before with the Relay for Life, so I'm going to turn it over to them. They have a video to share with you and some updates as well. They did a tremendous job. So we'll turn it over to you.
So we'd first like to thank you all for your support over the past year in this planning for the Relay for Life, which was on June 14th. Our original goal, this is our first relay, and our original goal was $10,000. We far exceeded it by raising over $27,000. So it's a huge success. And we truly, and we have a slide in the movie that does say, "Thank all of you for your support," and all the teachers, and staff, faculty members, the parents, and most importantly, the students, because we couldn't have done it without them. So we'll show you this video first, and then the second video is on my laptop because it wasn't compatible.
Here we have Nicole Gary, one of the organizers of the Relay for Life. Did you give us a little history on the Relay for Life?
Yes. It was first started by Dr. Gordy Klett, and he was from Tacoma, Washington. He walked around the track for about 24 hours. He raised a lot of money. So it's, he went all over the country and other countries, and now it's a big nonprofit organization that raises money for the American Cancer Society.
That's what I'm inspiration.
I'm sure they're all familiar.
I'm Cameron Callahan, and I'm here for my grandpa who also died of cancer.
I'm Jake McEnroe, and I'm here because my grandma died of breast cancer.
I'm Michael Kelly, and I'm here because I'm helping to support a good cause and help the cancer is free from our world.
Hello, I am Randy Grunin, and I'm here because I got affected by cancer because I have lost an eye. I could have lost both of my eyes, but they were lucky enough to save one of them.
So how much money did all of that get raised?
Um, as a whole school, we raised overall over $20,000, and all of it's going to the American Cancer Society. And it's pretty good for our first year that we raised $20,000.
Yeah, we're for that year.
So as this will say, this was put together by Jason Bergman and his students, so we do thank him and his students for doing this for us. This is actually one of their final speeches. So as the video captured, it was with the middle school and high school all together. It was a day event, so during the school day, the middle school transitioned down to the high school. Sorry. And as you saw, they then rotated through eight different stations. And we started the day off with speakers. We had a cancer survivor, an oncologist, American Cancer Society representative come as well. And then the eight stations, as you saw, one was the inflatable, the dunk tank, two were the relay, where they actually walked around and they experienced the actual portion of relay. Another one was the tents, where the teams came and represented their team and sold different things, such as, and as a pictureful show, they raffled off different prizes, they did face painting, and they did hair dye things. It was great. So it was a great day. So this was at one station, which had music trivia, and they did the Relay for Life tree. And they also were doing, they chalked different relay ribbons and why they relay on different posters, which you'll see on the pictures, and I think it's drawn this too. Yeah. So on here, which Amy Ali can talk a little bit about, this, we were so excited to do this, and it's going to be posted in our, in the high school's office.
So this idea, what it represents is a different thumbprint color for each different volunteer or staff member, participant, survivor. Each person had a different color, so this just shows the variety of different types of people who were involved with some type of cancer in their family and their lives or just here for the relay. The colors, I don't definitely remember them all.
I think green are the kids.
Blue was faculty.
And then purple is definitely survivors.
Purple survivors. But it just, like, overall, it just shows the amount of people we had. So those who have been touched by cancer themselves, those who were involved in fundraising and teams, those who volunteered, the staff members, and all the participants that were at the relay. So it's a nice little keepsake token of the day.
And then as we watch the next one, we had a vote photo booth who is there as well. So in here, you'll see all the different pictures of the kids. And then we asked, some of them didn't, chose not to write anything beside them, but we asked them to donate their picture to a cancer survivor, cancer patient, or just what they learned from the day or whatnot. So some of it, some of them really did what we asked, and others just signed their name, which was fine. But it's great, it's great, another keepsake to have. So, yeah. And then we'll press play.
The students got to keep one half of it, which was nice, and then the book was able to keep the second half of their photo booth pictures.
And this is just a quick, two-minute one. So what we'll look at now, I put this movie together with the pictures from Liz Palmer, who took pictures the day of, which we thank her for that as well. So it says, "Special thanks to the MTA for the $4,000 grant, please." And then we'd like to especially like to thank all of the companies who provided goods and donations. We'd also like to thank all faculty, staff, and parents who do any of their time and effort to make this day possible. Thank you, school committee members, for your support. Lastly, and most importantly, we would like to thank, congratulate, and applaud all of the students who participated and made this event a huge success. We raised over $27,000. Then I put this, I screenshotted the relay website. So it's $27,789.
That's wonderful. It's great. We need to get some of those.
From a middle school perspective, I'm still getting feedback. I was checking my work email just this week, and I had a brother-sister pair on my team, and I got an email this week saying, "We're going to the beach today," and Nicole sent me an email saying that Brendan told me that if I don't put sunblock on, I'm going to tell me Sebastian, and you're going to be in really big trouble.
That's great.
So, they had a great day, but they really did learn something. They really learned a lot from this day. I had 11 students on my team, and I had a hard time getting them out of our booth to participate because they all wanted to paint faces and chalk hair, which fortunately none of those pictures made it, but they had a great day and learned a lot.
That's great. As I said, it was a tremendous, tremendous event. And we'll put some of these pictures up on the website, actually, at slideshow. That would be great, yeah. We'll do that. That's great.
I know I commented at a last meeting, but I enjoyed participating. I look forward to next year, and I really think you guys did a fantastic job. It was a great day, and it was like you had done it, this was your 10th year. So on behalf, as a parent, and as someone in the school committee, I think, like I said at the last meeting, you know, you're preparing our kids, you know, educationally and athletically, but now you're really teaching them the meaning of giving back and making a difference, and it's not just all about you, it's about others. And I thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you, too. It's a very worthy cause, and it's something that is really bad, and to have people like you come together and put this on, it really is special. I mean, you learn a lot, the people that are part of it learn a lot, but it's there out trying to make a difference and help. And I just want to thank you and keep up the good work and keep going with it. You've done great. You ought to be proud of yourselves, every single one of you.
First of all, I'd like to apologize. We were out of town that weekend with the family. Otherwise, I would have been there. It's a cause that's very special to me, and since you've taken part in this and the students have, that's very special to me. It really, it really means a lot, and I look forward to being there next year. I can't believe the success that you had the first time around. That's excellent, not only to surpass your goals, but, but just to have the success out there on the field and everyone having fun, and I haven't heard one negative, nothing but positives, and everyone had a ball, and for the first time out, that's, that's pretty good. And I thank you, and I'll see you next year.
Just really echoing the comments of my school board members, just thank you very much for your dedication in getting the kids involved in this, you know, really important cause. Good for you guys, great job.
Thank you. Now go enjoy summer.
Thank you for your support.
And wear sunscreen. Great. Thank you very much. And then the beautiful painting, the collage with everybody, I did have the opportunity to put my thumbprint on it, but I just think it's such a moving reminder to everybody about what a great day it was. Thanks. And Ms. Halsdorf for painting the tree itself.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you again. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
It's going to be, yeah. No, we didn't have to come back for it.
So we want to move back to executives.
Yeah, just special recognizance.
Yeah, we're starting that.
Okay. Just wanted to welcome officially Mr. Gray, who is here as office manager. This is his first meeting. Peter started officially with us on July 1st. He was down a few days before that to get acclimated, to meet with people, move in, but we're very fortunate to have him and look forward to a great working relationship. I think you're going to find him to be tremendously professional.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd now, I'd like to bundle, we'll start with, actually entertain a motion for the accept the regular session minutes of June 19th, 2013.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
I'm abstaining.
One abstention. Well, I'll now entertain a motion for approval only to accept the executive session minutes for January 9th, March 6th, May 1st, June 5th, all 2013.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. One of them I was absent at, can I, can I vote for them even though I was absent?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. I'll now entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes for approval and release for February 13th, March 20th, April 3rd, and June 19th, all 2013.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. It is a vote.
We'll now move back to the superintendent's report, the elementary literacy special revenue account request. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A team of us, elementary reading specialists, Dr. Lozey and myself, and the elementary principals have met, and we do occasionally meet, our focus being on elementary literacy. We have, as you know, a summer program for students for four weeks this summer, but some of our children do not have libraries at home to reinforce reading beyond what is in the school day and what they can borrow from the library. So we did outreach to numerous banks, all of the banks actually in Auburn, and very fortunate to get back donations from the four that are listed here. Webster First Federal Credit Union sent $50, Central One Federal Credit Union sent $250, Webster Five Cent Savings sent $150, and Hometown Bank $100. So want to first have you accept with gratitude. I did include a copy of a thank you letter that was sent to them. And then second, I'm going to ask you to establish a special revenue account in which we'll deposit those funds and use the money to actually send children home with a library for reading.
I'll make the motion to accept the gratitude, the donations from Webster First Federal Credit Union, Central One Credit Union, Webster Five Cent Savings, and Hometown Bank.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. It is a vote. We'll now move back to the superintendent's report, the elementary literacy special revenue account request.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A team of us, elementary reading specialists, Dr. Lozey and myself, and the elementary principals have met, and we do occasionally meet, our focus being on elementary literacy. We have, as you know, a summer program for students for four weeks this summer, but some of our children do not have libraries at home to reinforce reading beyond what is in the school day and what they can borrow from the library. So we did outreach to numerous banks, all of the banks actually in Auburn, and very fortunate to get back donations from the four that are listed here. Webster First Federal Credit Union sent $50, Central One Federal Credit Union sent $250, Webster Five Cent Savings sent $150, and Hometown Bank $100. So want to first have you accept with gratitude. I did include a copy of a thank you letter that was sent to them. And then second, I'm going to ask you to establish a special revenue account in which we'll deposit those funds and use the money to actually send children home with a library for reading.
I'll make the motion to accept the gratitude, the donations from Webster First Federal Credit Union, Central One Credit Union, Webster Five Cent Savings, and Hometown Bank.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. I'll obtain the second motion.
I'll then recommend the motion to establish a special revenue account, to be known as the elementary literacy account.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It is a vote.
The next item, as happens over the summer, we have students move in and others withdraw. A new student has registered in the child's IEP. It requires, an ABA instructional assistant is required to support the child so that effective progress can be made. So I'm looking for your approval to hire an ABA, and we would pay for that with savings that we've realized through our new hires versus those that have left the district. So there is funding available, and with an IEP, it's our contractual obligation to provide it, but obviously want your support in doing so.
Make a motion to approve the hiring of an ABA instructional assistant to support a student as required in the child's IEP.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The remaining items are informational. Wanted to report to you that Mrs. Chase, along with Mrs. Elaine, Mrs. Levin Savage, and the preschool staff members, they're NAEYC, the National Association for the Education of Young Children. Their annual report was submitted and approved, so our accreditation remains in effect, and it's an awful lot of work that they put into that. So I, I thank them for their efforts in doing so.
Through the chair, if I may. Dr. Benau, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but can you just give a brief overview as to what they look for in the program?
There are a number of different standards that they look for in terms of the physical environment, the curriculum that's provided, the materials that are utilized, and the report actually that goes in probably is, you know, a two- or three-inch report, and they have to address each of the standards. And then someone comes out, they didn't at this point here, this is just the written review annually, but someone comes out and actually checks to be sure that everything that they reported is in fact in place. So it really is, it's the standard for, it signifies a very high-quality program.
And do we have a date yet as to when they will be coming to visit, or do they review this first?
They actually, they came probably two years ago. It's on a triannual cycle, and everything was approved. And just like with the NEASC accreditation at the high school, then you submit annual reports, so that's what happened here, just to maintain the accreditation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Just wanted to bring to your attention Mrs. Chase, the principal of the Mary D. Stone School. The Department of Ed has a number of different initiatives going on, one of them being educator evaluation, as reported to you before. And the next phase of that is district-determined measures, and actually measuring our students' progress and rating our teachers on how they are impacting that progress. MCAS is one of the required areas, but numerous of our grade levels or subject areas are not MCAS-tested. So Mrs. Chase has volunteered to be part of a DESI Anchor Standards Development Panel. They're actually going to look at the history, social science curriculum for Grade K, and she, the work that they're going to do, as it says here, will lay the foundation for the district, for the DDMs process moving forward. So it's something that she took on voluntarily to do. She actually spent the day there today, leaving her vacation in Maine to go and do so. So I just wanted to offer congratulations and bring it to your attention as well.
Through the chair, if I may. And this just is another example of how fortunate we are for the staff that we have here in Auburn, that, you know, she was willing to take the day and go on vacation to come in and do this. So I, myself personally appreciate that, too.
It is great, and it gives us an advantage, too, when she returns that she can share with us the information that she's learned. So it is, it's very much appreciated, I agree. Just wanted to bring to your attention again the grant-funded summer interns. If you remember, it was at the beginning of last school year. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Bouvier, and Mr. Fahy were here, Mr. Campbell primarily, and talking about the intern program that we had. One of our requirements, we are supporting both special education and non-special education students through this program. Students, we need to provide transition support for them as they go out into the workforce, and this is a great example of creating jobs. It really helps us in the short summer to get things ready. As noted here, we have three students that are working in the technology department under Mr. Bouvier, four that are working in the facilities department under Mr. Fahy, as well as the custodians at the high school primarily, and two students working in the preschool. Mr. Campbell actually held his first meeting with them today. He meets with them during, at the end of their shift on Wednesdays, just to debrief about, you know, job skills, what they learned, being a good employee, teamwork, and all of that. So off to a great start, but just wanted to alert you that that's happening again, and it's grant-funded through our grant programs. The next one, I wasn't sure if you were aware of this, but on January 10th of 2013, Governor Patrick signed into law MGL Chapter 459 of the Acts of 2012, which is titled "An Act Relative to Background Checks." And what this will require, starting with this upcoming school year, is that in addition to query checks, that there also be the national fingerprint-based criminal background checks that is done on the federal level. And there is a cost to employees for this. It's estimated right now not to exceed $55 for certified teachers and $30 for non-certified. Now, we got notification, and I included it in here, actually the actual legislation on this, but we get some communication that the Department of Ed continues to work on the implementation of this. They put out an RFP for a vendor to actually be the one who would support this happening. It's not yet in place, but I wanted to just make you aware that it is something that's coming. And also a letter from State Auditor Suzanne Baum, who has, as you've seen before, reviews different initiatives or expectations, and some she has determined them to be unfunded mandates. This one here, she did not determine that to be an unfunded mandate. It is an expectation, a requirement that employees will need to do, and as I said, it's not yet finalized, but just wanted to keep you up to date on that. There is a letter that's been drafted that all new employees will need to sign, just making them aware of it. It's not yet in place, but just to keep you apprised.
Through the chair. What additional clerical work will we be responsible for as far as handling this?
You know, we're not actually sure at this point. I would have to believe that there's going to be some, but I don't know. I don't know if, I would think we're going to need to collect the fingerprints and certify that it is actually that person with the license when they come in now for query checks. Mrs. Otten needs to see a license and take a copy of it, you know, before signing off on it. So it's really, there's a lot of unknowns in this whole thing at this point, so, but I would anticipate it would have to take some clerical staff support.
So they put the-
Therein lies the unfunded mandate, right?
The cart before the horse, once again, and-
Right.
-made it an unfunded cart.
Right. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may. Dr. Benau, just one other question. The, the fee being assessed to, to the hired employee, is that standard across the board? Or do you know of any school districts that are offering to pay for that?
I've not heard of any that would. My, this is an assumption that I'm going to make, just as teachers, for example, need to be certified and they pay that fee directly to the Department of Education, I would think this is probably along those same lines, but I would anticipate that we'll be getting an awful lot more guidance coming out soon around this issue, I anticipate.
Right.
Yeah.
Through the chair, one more question. When I first read this, I must have had it backwards because I assumed that it would be $30 for non-certified and $55 for certified. Why, why do you suppose it's $55 for certified?
I think those are the maximum values. I'm not sure, because actually some notification that we got had even mentioned 35. So this is an estimated cost. I don't know that they've set them formally yet, Mr. Scobie, so I don't know, but those were, my guess is that's the limits that were placed in the law itself, is my guess.
I just didn't know if you ran into it a little more than I had, why it would be more.
Yeah.
No?
My own, yeah, it would be a guess, but my guess would be, I shouldn't make it, but my guess would be certified employees may make more money, but why, it certainly wouldn't cost more to run their fingerprints, so I don't know. Yeah.
Have to wait and see.
Sometimes the government does punish us for making money.
They do that quite a bit. You're right, Judge.
Doesn't have to make sense, right? Yeah.
We're going to unfinished business?
Okay, so just to keep you apprised, you had approved at our, one of our recent meetings, support of instructional assistance to reduce the class sizes at Grade 2. Mrs. Kozic reported to me that within the past 10 days, and this is actually a week old at this point, they had 10 new registrants for Grade 4. So we are monitoring that right now. As I said, it's not unusual to have students withdraw, but should this remain in effect, I would likely be returning at the August 7th meeting to seek some support for some additional, to get those student-teacher ratios down with some IA support. Just wanted to keep you apprised.
So through the chair, if I may. We, you wouldn't be looking to front on the classroom, probably, because you don't have the room, right?
We don't. That's our issue with all of our schools. We really don't have the space to add teaching. So, and, you know, we've had class sizes to this degree before, but additional instructional assistance support, we're fortunate to have some really dynamic people on staff that Mrs. Kozic felt that that would certainly be a tremendous help.
I mean, it's, you could look at it as a good problem. People want to come here, so.
That's right. That's right. Yep.
Through the chair. Do you suppose that if everything works out in the building process, that we would have room for such numbers?
I think so. You know, when the master plan team, we've actually just scheduled, we're going to meet on July 30th, so that team is coming back together to make some decisions. I can tell you when the education subcommittee of that group met back in the spring, we, and I was a member of that subcommittee, we looked at the number of classes required for JB and for Packard Chalk. There are ample spaces, plus some extras, at the middle school to support those. Part, as part of our long-range planning, though, depending on which two of the elementary schools stay in place for primary, we may need to look at adding a modular to one of them, quite possibly. You know, for example, Bryn Mawr School, they, well, I shouldn't say only them, none of our elementary schools have any open or available space in them, so we're going to need to look, and maybe there would be some reconfiguration, I don't know, but it's possible we may need to look for a modular classroom to be added.
And that would all be part of the master plan?
Correct. That would all come forward as a recommendation. Yep.
Thank you.
To grant omnibus approval to Mr. Gray.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just, if I may, and this is no reflection on you, Mr. Gray. Where he's, where he's fairly new, I will approve it. You know, I'm gonna vote yes, but only because I'm confident that you will be overseeing it. But I'm just a little hesitant, just with him being so new.
I understand. And I said that to Mr. Gray. He and I and Mrs. Turcot met earlier this week. Mrs. Turcot, Mrs. Moore, and I were meeting regularly, so it really is very much of a moving target at this point, but it will all be done together.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. It is a vote.
You have before you a year-to-date budget report, which is, as Dr. Burnell just pointed out, is a reflection of what we have so far to date. And if we work towards the final transfers and reconciliations, that number will be presented to you. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the year-to-date budget report, but in my brief review of it with the business staff, I didn't see anything that stood out as being concerned.
Any questions?
Just one through the chair, if I may. This is a stupid question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Is there, is there any need to be concerned if we're over 100%? I mean, is that, is that a problem? Or it says 101.6 or 100.1?
It's only that a transfer has not yet been completed through Town Hall. So, there's sometimes a little bit of lag when a transfer is approved, and for them to post it at Town Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Would be a problem if the bottom line was over 100%. It's not, so.
You also have a copy of the fourth quarter hour recording.
Once again, I reviewed it briefly with Dr. Burnell and the business office. If anybody has any questions, but I said I didn't see anything that was, I'm any concerned to bring to your attention right away.
And that is our first business report. I don't believe we have to go into executive session.
We do not.
Well, I would entertain a motion.
You got it.
Make a motion to return.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.